I would like to bring the June 19, 2019 meeting of the Interbar Board of School Directors to order. And this call will have local speakers.
Ms. Fagan, here. Ms. Alonso, here. Mr. Goldsboro.
Here.
Ms. Burkeo, here. Ms. Joseph, here. Mr. Harris.
Crescent.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Chabon.
Here.
Mr. Evans, could we add that in the presentation?
Certainly. Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer, bless all schools, colleges, and especially Intervaro District, and grant to this board and their deliveries since this evening the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken will be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name, amen.
Blessed be this, to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, who are with us, and who will serve us, and who will give us power, and who will give us justice for all.
First up, to recognition, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. This evening, we are going to be recognizing retired Chief Cliff Engel, who served for many years as the Prospect Park Police Chief. Cliff and I have had a long and great relationship. We've worked very closely together over the years. A lot of what we do dealing with students and family matters, at times unfortunately, we do need to involve the police. And with three buildings, the kindergarten academy, Prospect Park School, and the high school, Cliff is accessible. Twenty-four hours, no matter what the situation is, he has always been available to support us in improving the quality and safety of the education for our kids. We could not not recognize him this evening because of the service that he has provided to us. So, on behalf of the administration and the board, Cliff, I would like to thank you so much. Kelly, would you like to say a few words? And he also has a few students who have something that they would like to share with you.
Okay. I just want to echo what Superintendent Riley just said. In my six years at Prospect Park School, I could not have asked for a better, stronger connection between our school and the police department. Chief Engel was always there when we needed him, and I think that that connection, that strong interaction between our school and the police department, has really helped out, has helped our kids a ton. You know, we've had some really good heart-to-heart conversations with our students and their parents when they made mistakes, and to have his presence there to really show the gravity of the situation in a kind and nurturing way as a learning lesson, instead of just that, you know, you're getting in trouble, kind of a message. It was just a really great relationship, and so glad we had that. Thank you. Two of our students here are just going to read a couple of short letters from Starwood Tiana. Fabiak, go on up.
Dear Chief Engel, thank you for everything you have done through the DARE program at Prospect Park School. You supported DARE when no other police department did because of the loss of Grandma. You arranged the great DARE trips that we enjoyed so much. You attended every DARE graduation, and you were always genuinely excited for every student there. You were also a DARE officer before you became the Prospect Park Chief of Police. We appreciate everything you have done through DARE over the years. Happy retirement. This is Heather Smith.
One more of our students, Gabe Mangano.
Superintendent Riley, the school board representatives, Principal of Prospect, I mean Intervaro, and our distinguished guest, Chief Cliff Engel. I'm Gabe Mangano. I recently graduated from eighth grade at Prospect Park School. Now, I would just like to say a few words in honor of Chief Engel. I know firsthand how much he's done for Prospect Park School, children, and our Intervaro family. The chief has been a part of our world in many areas, from being a DARE officer to being the chief that you see on your way to school, making sure all of the kids were safe crossing, and knowing many of us by name. We would see him in the hallways at school, and he would ask how we were doing. I attended the high school this year for math, and we even found out he showed up there. For all of us in Intervaro, I'd like to say thank you for being there for us and keeping us safe each day, so that we can focus on our schoolwork, enjoy retirement, deal with all those kids he hears, you've really earned it.
Here's some fun reading for you in your retirement, some fun letters for your kids.
And we're going to get you copies of those letters. And also, you may be retiring, but you're not going too far, because he does have grandchildren at Lenolden, correct?
Actually, yes. I'm a graduate in Intervaro, my children are graduating from there, now I have grandchildren in Intervaro. So, I've been through the system myself, on both sides of the road, but thank you for that.
I'd like to thank Chief Kelly from Lenolden for joining us this evening in support of his colleagues. So, thank you for coming, Chief Kelly. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Moving on, congratulations, Eric.
Thank you.
We appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Number three, public comments, Mr. Riley.
First up, we have Stephanie Kozak.
Hello. How are you? Can I stand this light? Thanks, everybody. I don't want to go and labor the point from what I felt about after work meetings the other night, but I just want to let you know that I represent Smart Park Express Park. We've been in business for 25 years. I have employees here from Smart Park Express Park. If you want to just say hello or raise your hand, I'm here to support this mission. But one thing that I want to drive home is that I understand that we did not have a tax increase as what was brought to our attention, but the school board still enjoyed the benefits of our growth. So, it went from approximately $288,000 eighteen years ago to $633,000 now that you're paying, five businesses are paying to the school board, to the school district. That's quite an increase. If we were to look at it, if we increased our rates, Smart Park Express Park's rates, we would go up to $21 a day. We're still at the $6 a day, or $670 a day. We have raised our rates. So, when you look at that, it's quite a disparity. The other thing that I wanted to let you know is that we increase our taxes, it's actually increasing the risk that we have instead of competitive with our competitors on the north side of the airport, which starts down the park walk on the north side of the airport, and the airport itself. Also, that keeps us from raising our employees' wages and getting them raises and increases and being able to facilitate their lives. The other thing that I wanted to just touch upon again is that we're a part of this community. I understand that the gentleman that you just awarded said that he went through Intervaro, I went through Intervaro, I was a cheerleader for four years on Honor of Society and the name of the state and the community, and have been participating in the camp, in the school board, and believe in education and believe in educating our children in what it takes, not just book learning, but also extrajurisdictional learning and learning how to live in the world of the humanities. And that's why I send my staff to insight seminars, to other professional training seminars, so they can learn to live in this world differently than what we teach in our schools. The other thing that I wanted to talk to you about is that Uber and Lyft hits our business hard, impacts our business in addition to other airport operators. So, possibly there's creative ways that the school board can look at raising other funds for your deficit, if you have a deficit. Let's see what else I can say.
Is there anything else?
So, I'm pleading with you, please reconsider raising the taxes on the five businesses that are giving you $633,000 a year, which is really significant. And that's the points that I should give you, really. Thank you very much.
Hello. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone that came out to support us today. Just want to say, and some of us might be, I mean, we are mainly competing with the off-airport airports north of the airport, which don't generate revenue for the school district, as well as the airport, which doesn't generate any revenue for the school district, and the Uber and Lyft of the new heavy header, which don't generate any revenue for the school district. Seems to me that the school board should have a fiscal responsibility to the residents of the school district to support our residents rather than make us less competitive to the other options that do not generate any revenue for the school. We strongly urge the school board to reconsider that.
Barbara, I think Doogie.
Hi. I'm an employee at Smart Park, and I've been a resident of Lenolden for forty years. I just pretty much agree with what John and what Stephanie said. We're in competition with the airport and who doesn't pay any taxes, and we have to compete with them. We try to keep our rates as low as possible to be able to stay in the market. And I just ask you to, there's plenty of other businesses that can help in this. We have used car dealers throughout the town. We have hotels. There are plenty of small businesses here that can help with whatever the deficit is, and I just wish you would look around for some money from other than our parking lots. Thank you.
Thank you all for your follow comments, we appreciate it. Moving on to number four.
Motion 4.1, the volume is of the regular meeting of the Interbar Board of School Directors held on May 15, 2019, be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, or is it a favorite? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, number zero. Next up will be our solicitors report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, since the last meeting, our office assisted the district in reviewing contracts, reviewed special education matters, and the tax appeals, and also reviewed the policies. That concludes my report.
Moving on to number six, Mr. Evans.
On the Office of Finance, motion 6.1, that the treasurer's report for the month ended May 31, 2019, be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, or is it a favorite? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, number zero. Next up will be our solicitors report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, since the last meeting, our office assisted the district in reviewing contracts, reviewed special education matters, and the tax appeals, and also reviewed the policies. That concludes my report.
Moving on to number six, Mr. Evans.
On the Office of Finance, motion 6.1, that the treasurer's report for the month ended May 31, 2019, be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, or is it a favorite? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, number zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 6.2, that fund disbursement in the amount of $4,409,838.01 be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, or is it a favorite? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, number zero. Next up, correspondence, Mr. President.
There is no further.
Sir, and next up will be number three, a finance meeting, Mr. Chabon.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The Finance Committee met on June 3, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. The first item discussed was the 2019-2020 budget. The board reviewed the changes to the budget from our main meeting. After a thorough review and analysis of department budgets, contractual raises, and healthcare costs, the lowest we can go without using any fund balances, 2.8%. At a 0%, there would be a $1.1 million deficit. At a 2.8%, there's a $26,000 surplus. At 2.9%, there's a $68,000 surplus. At 3%, there's a $109,000 surplus. We spent some time discussing what percentage increase would be the most acceptable to all board members. If you'd like to hear the conversation, please go to the website. Generally, some board members want to go as low as 2.8%, with the argument being we need to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers while maintaining programs, and some wanted to go as high as 3%, just in case of any unanticipated costs. We determined that the best situation was to end up at a 2.9%, which is on the agenda for approval tonight. The impact of a 2.9% increase will be about $95 for the year on an average assessed household of $88,000. That ends up being about $8 each month. Mrs. Riley and Mr. Highschool will go into more detail about how the money is being allocated in their budget presentation. It's my hope that all board members will vote to approve this budget. All of us have spent many hours looking at line item budgets and asking them very good questions. It's been an open and transparent process. They are not easy decisions to make, and I understand that some may vote because they wanted a 3% tax increase, but I urge you to support this budget. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Next up, 8.2, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The last TBO meeting was on June 3. I myself was not present, but was made aware of what had happened during that meeting. At that time, Mr. Galloway presented that summer maintenance studio schedule, which was to start two days ago, I do believe. And the other thing that was presented during that time was about marching band uniforms. So, there is something that is on to be attended this evening, going forward with that. Second, please, Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving on to 8.3, legislative, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. On May 17, I attended the legislative breakfast, which was held at the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. There was a large turnout, like all the school districts, superintendents, teachers were there, and many legislators. And council and everyone agreed it was a great event. There was strong attendance by many legislators and the opportunities for some discussion. And recommendations included allowing more time for these discussions with legislators in the future. And one of the main topics, again, was the charter school and cyber charter school reform and getting that passed. And just so for people who don't know about the charter funding, charter school tuition is one of the largest areas of mandated cost growth for school districts. And during 2017-2018 school year, school districts paid charter schools $1.8 billion, representing nearly 7% of total school district expenditures. The $1.8 billion grew by 10% or $170 million from the year prior. And since charter schools are entirely locally funded by school district, this growth meant that 37 cents of every new dollar raised in property taxes in the year 2017-2018 went directly to charter schools. And because of the way charter school tuition is calculated, each charter school collects a different tuition rate for students based on sending their school district. In 2017-2018, regular education charter school tuition across school districts ranged from $7,600 up to $18,500 per student, and special education tuition ranged from $15,000 to $48,000 per student. None of these rates correspond to a charter school's actual cost to educate a student. So, that's, we want to get that information out there to the public on the cost of charter school. And another topic that was discussed was Senate Bill 115, which is CPR instruction, which is now, has since turned into Act 7. So, the CPR instruction for high school students. And Senator Killian introduced this legislation, which would require the Pennsylvania Department of Education to develop a CPR and automated external defibrillator model curriculum and guidelines for students in grades nine through 12. PD would be required to work with the Department of Health to develop this curriculum to include hands-on techniques for CPR instruction and the use of an external defibrillator to ensure that it's feasible to the local level. This includes having educators trained and giving them access to the resources needed to train their students. A teacher or educator may instruct this course without a CPR certification, however, they must be accompanied by a teacher or volunteer with Pennsylvania certification. This was, this new law will be in effect the upcoming school year 2019-2020, and Governor Wolf just signed it on June 12. And again, to reiterate that PD, the Pennsylvania Department of Education is required to come up with a solution for the school districts. And there will be no, that was our last meeting, on May 17. Legislative meeting is September 11. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving on to 8.4, Lower County Community College.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. We have not had another liaison meeting, however, on Monday, June 17, we had four representatives from the Delaware County Community College come and do a presentation to the school board regarding the purchase, Delaware County Community College purchasing the Prendergast Building in Upper Darby. One of the reasons they came out to talk to us was because we were a particular institution that voted that the purchase of that down based upon the language and the presentation that had been given to us and all the information that we had at the time. There are 12 contributing districts in Delaware County, and they need two-thirds of them to approve that in order for that to be, for that purchase to go through. So, we listened to what they had presented. They gave us some new information, but at this time, we haven't changed anything, there's nothing on our agenda for that at this time. But we did give some clarification on a number of items. One of the things is that, as a contributing school district, we cannot simply, at the end of our obligation in 2035, I believe, we cannot just leave that group. That would have to be approved by the Department of Education. Apparently, that's only been approved one other time. So, that's something that we needed to hear and take into consideration. Our next official meeting will not be taking place until, I do believe, the end of October. All right? That can be true.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Next up, 8.5, Lower County Community Union, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out to listen to my reports. It's going to be really, really long, so just hold on. Ready for this? I'm going to choke it down. Delaware County Intermediate Unit met on June 5, 2019. Agreement with Scripps National Spelling Bee to sponsor the Delaware County Scripps Spelling Bee in 2019-2020 school year. It'd be scheduled for Saturday, February 1, 2020. It's a lot of fun. We did real well with that, just a lot of time spent with our VIU. Affiliation agreement between Saint Joseph University, also affiliated agreement between Westchester University. Continue to contract with PG&amp; Associates for the hearing support music program. Also, a contract with Marple Newtown and Upper Darby School District to provide psychological services. Contract with Westchester, not Strilean. Contract with Chester Upton School District to provide purchasing coordinator. The intermediate unit grant, general operational budget for 2019-2020 has been approved by 15 school districts. A weighted vote for this budget was 477 to zero names. The next board meeting will be October 7, 2019. For more information, news, go to DCIU.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next up, New Year's Day, Mr. Alonso.
I really don't have much, I just wanted to congratulate our graduating class. They graduated on June 12, so put that out there. And then, just over the summer, I'm going to work with Ms. Riley, there are several programs that we do have. There's some competitions and programs for teachers that the VFW runs, and it's opportunities and awards that can go to the school district along with the teachers if they're nominated, like kind of like scholarship programs that we have for our students. Deadlines are October 31, so students have a chance to look through and see which teachers that she feels are best fit for these awards, and we can submit them and push them through, and hopefully we can get some recognition for some of our teachers coming up. So, just going to be doing that for the summer. That's it, all right.
Thank you, Ms. Alonso. And next up, number nine, that'd be the presentation of the project, Ms. Alonso.
Thank you. Yep, ready. Yeah. Slide this chair down to the other side. Sorry. Mark. Just up. Sorry, my back is going to be to all of you. Thank you all for being here this evening. At this time, every June meeting, Mr. Highschool and I do present the upcoming year's budget to ensure that all of our residents have the opportunity to view it over the summer through watching the board meeting. It's also available online, and we do also have some copies of the budget booklet that we have put together. As I stated at the beginning of these presentations each year, this is a process that we start earlier and earlier. This year, we were starting to begin the process in December. Over the course of the next six months, Mr. Highschool and I work with all of our directors. We work with the board, and we work with our principals to really scrutinize how we are spending every dollar in this district, down to the penny. So, we are constantly looking at it, making changes. We do everything within our ability to apply for grants to offset the costs of some of these programs that we have, but it is important to recognize that this is a process that really does take at least six months of our time to develop this budget and make recommendations to the board for the following year. Okay? So, with that, we will get started. I should turn it over. Oh, there we go. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to go real quick over this one. This is just basically where our revenue is generated from. There's three major sources for school districts, local, state, and federal. The local consists mainly of school real estate taxes, transfer taxes. We have IDEA funding that's passed through from the DCIU, and then we also get various local grants from businesses and community members. Currently, of that 64% in local taxes, 92% local sources, 92% of that is tax revenue. And of the total budget, about 59% of our revenue is tax revenue from the real estate taxes. State sources are subsidy payments from the state. We get subsidized for reimbursement. We get certain subsidy payments for special ed, basic ed, and we also get social security that we pay out as an employer. We get subsidized with that as well. About 50% of the retirement and the social security come back to us from the state. In the federal sources, it's all our Title I, Title II, and Title IV monies. We also have access funding. Those are diminishing every year, going, it's only about one, obviously, as you can see, it's only 1% of our total revenue. And this is the place that we like to start, because you don't know what you can spend until you know what you'll have to spend. So, this is a crucial part of our budget here.
Oh, sorry.
Now, this is the expenditure side, and as you can see, our salary benefits are about 78% of our budget, and those are basically contractual and statutory in nature, so we cannot really do much with those, other than during negotiation time. And we do shop around for prescription and medical benefits to try to get the best deal. We also have the Delco Intermediate Unit, which is most of our special ed students are serviced there that we can't service in-house. We do pay the Delaware County Community College, if you remember there. Our special ed costs are about 3.6%, but that's been increasing every year. And our debt service is obviously, that's something that we can't really do much with, facilities, and then our school budgets there. And if you look, basically, our non, the non-salaried benefit piece, it's about 22% of our budget. And of that 22%, only about 9% of that is things that we can actually go out and try to adjust for. to adjust for. So it's very, it's very tight when you have about 9% of the $69 million. So it makes things, you know, a little tougher every year because that number will go down as the salary benefits go up. So your benefits go up, your salaries go up, and you, other non-salary benefits, things get a percentage of the budget. So it creates a challenge every year.
So what drives the increases to the budget? Our salaries, our contractual obligations, that is a large portion of it. Healthcare costs, as everyone knows, they continue to fill up. Our retirement costs, which is Peters, special education, and our charter school tuition costs. And this chart here just shows what our contribution, our annual contribution is for Peters, which is the Pennsylvania state retirement system.
Now, this is just kind of a, look at our fund balance. And what the fund balance generally is, it's an accumulation of your surplus or your deficits throughout the years as a link of the school district. And we've been, district here is 2071, so these numbers are cumulative of those years. As you can see, every year, these are our audited financials, these are from our audited financials, and we've gone from 7.1 to 3.9. So we do have a declining fund balance. However, if you notice, the deficits are getting smaller, so we are reversing the trend and trying to build that fund balance back up. It's crucial that we do that because if we have the, what, for any bond, any bonds, that, or anything of that nature for loans, you stand on course, looks at this, our bond rating would go down tremendously. So just, this gives you an idea that we started to turn the trend around. As you can see, 475,000 was for 2016, 2017 to 2018, it was 347,000. So we're turning it around. The deficit's getting smaller. We're hoping to have surpluses in there in the next few years.
So options that we consider when we're trying to balance the budget. Again, we're negotiating contracts that are fiscally beneficial to both parties. You will see tonight on the agenda that we do have two contracts that the board will be approving this evening with the IAA and the IPF. We look at restructuring, reducing, eliminating programs and services and staff if we have to. A lot of that is based on teachers that are retiring and how we restructure and if those positions actually need to be replaced because there is significant savings in that area. We do look at deferring the purchase of textbooks, materials, and technology for our students and teachers. We look at deferring capital improvement projects. Anything that we have been doing right now, we are doing in-house with our own maintenance department, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. And of course, increasing taxes. So the proposed tax increase for this upcoming year is 2.9, which will increase the mileage rate to 38.1767, and that will generate about $1.2 million in revenue. And if you look over here, this is just a comparison chart of where we stand to other districts in the county. And we are, I would say we're in the middle, middle of the road.
As Mr. Chabon alluded to earlier, the assessment with the increase, if you're at 88,000, which is the county average for residential properties, about $95 per household. And as you can see, obviously, it gets a little higher as the assessments come up. So if your, your assessment's 100,000, you're going to see an increase of about $108 per year with that increase in revenue.
So our proposed staffing for next year, we are increasing our continuum of services at the high school by adding an additional autistic support teacher there. We're looking at adding a social worker. Why? This is actually being paid through access funds. We are adding a supervisor of literacy position, which we are paying for through ready-to-grant funds. And we are doing one classification of our supervisor of curriculum and instruction to a director of STEM and professional learning. So they are the recommended proposed staff for next year. Some of our highlights as far as professional development, we will continue to have our membership with the Delaware Valley Consortium for Excellence in Equity. We have provided our teachers and our administrators with a lot of professional development. They've been an excellent resource to us. We see the value in that, and we are going to continue. This year, we are moving to a differentiated professional development model, which is allowing teachers and administrators to choose the area of professional development that they would like to focus on throughout the year. And some of these are the highlights of what our teachers will be focusing on. Early learning, phonics skills, decoding, differentiation and co-teaching, STEM, assisting students with analyzing text, which is a critical skill right now, and of course, trauma-informed Some of our other areas, safety and security, we are putting in all-new interior doors for our elementary classrooms, oh, I see a little typo there, elementary classrooms at Prospect Park School. We are doing some building enhancements. Again, these are all being done by our maintenance department. We're doing a refresh at the high school. We are updating the library space. We are updating that to resemble more of a, more of a college common gathering area. There will be a writing center for students to visit and get assistance with throughout the day. We do have an interbar coffee house, which is now going to have a coffee area for students to get beverage if they're in there working. We're getting new carpeting, a fresh coat of paint. Lenolden is also getting a painting of all of their hallways. Prospect Park, we're installing some cubbies in the lobby area for our students when they have materials and they're going to their PE gym classes. And for pre-K, we're retrofitting two classrooms, and that's being paid through a pre-K grant fund. Also, for technology, we are at the end of our life cycle on our current laptops, so our teachers and administrators are receiving laptops. We're replacing student desktops, and we are replacing about 1,000 Chromebooks and having an additional eight parts available throughout the district. We also have a few of our grant opportunities. Our pre-K count grant, which is a five-year grant, is continuing. We will be entering into year two. We also have applied for an additional 17 spots to open up a second classroom at the Kindergarten Academy, which we are very excited about. Boeing, we applied for a Boeing grant, which is $125,000 grant. As I said, this, these grants offset the cost that districts would have to generate this funds to do these things. So Boeing has been very supportive of us, and we're hoping that that will continue. We're also applying for a prescient grant for $5,000 for inclusive musical practices.
These are, these are current. I got these off the website this morning. This is a look at the PA State Education piece of the budget. For Governor Wolf this year, he's looking for a 441 million dollar increase in our basic ed funding. Last year, for 1819, he was only looking at 100 million. He's also looking for about 50 million in special ed. As an increase for 1819, it was only 15 million. So he's focusing on that, but there's still not enough in the special ed funding if you were to ask a lot of administrators, but he's going in the right direction. The proposed pre-K counts funding is at 40 million. Last year, it was at 20 million. Now, we have two classes currently, and we are going to see that $289,000. It was a five-year deal. I think that started last year. So we are looking to add an additional class, and it would be another $144,500 for that additional class. Right now, we are just locked in at 289. Hopefully, we'll get some good news relatively soon. The proposed budget for ready-to-learn is status quo. It's 268 million for this year, and next year is 268 million. So our, our ready-to-learn funds will stay the same, remain the same from 1819 to 1920. That's a $1,550,000. So they're going in the right direction. Their basic ed funding formula is not quite what people would like, but we are seeing improvement, especially in special ed.
Just for the taxpayers' information, we do try and keep in contact with our local legislators because they are up in Harrisburg making these decisions, and that does absolutely affect how we spend our dollars right now. On, Ms. Verkio stated this in her presentation, but right now, the hot topic is the cyber, cyber education and those costs. And as taxpayers and those of us that work in the administrative end, this is an area that we really need the legislators to make some changes. The cost are astronomical. They, these charter schools, cyber schools do not provide the same education that we do here in, in public schools. We do have students that do choose to attend these programs. We have tried to make a very strong, we have a very strong plan in place to meet with students who have left the district in hopes that they will come back. There's a lot of personal engagement, and we have been very fortunate that we have been able to bring a lot of these students back. But our tuition bill total is about a half a million dollars, and that is money that we would much prefer to put towards programs here within the district and not to students who are attending these programs. A lot of time, they're not successful. They do end up coming back to us, but they, they have not picked classes, they haven't been attending, so there is catch-up on that. So that is an area that, as a superintendent, what I feel we most need to advocate for and see some change is these, are these cyber, cyber legislation. So we put some information up here on our local legislators. They are supportive and recognize the need here, but this is available on the website. We have met with each of these representatives. Senator Kearney was here. He did a visit, walked around our schools. We're in the process of planning something with Representative DeLoso, but we do work with them and do try and speak with them on a regular basis. And with that, that's the end of the presentation. I would like to thank Mr. Chabon as the finance chair. As Marty and I are working through this process, there are times when we do need to call him and get some feedback, and he's always available to us, and he really does provide us with good direction, as does the rest of the board. So I thank you for your time and your work on this. It is a long process, but I believe it's very collaborative, and, you know, as a board, you work very hard to recognize the needs and what we're trying to do here educationally for our students. So I thank you for that. I thank the administrators, and we will continue to do our best with this. So thank you very much.
Ms. Riley, for that presentation. Very informative work. As Ms. Riley said, the budget is a long process. And it's a whole new one. And next up, Mr. Evans, number 10.
Motion number 10, and this is a roll call motion, that the board of school directors adopt the attached final general fund budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, with a proposed expenditures of 69,769,310, requiring an increase of 1.0759 mils over the current mileage rate, resulting in a tax increase of 2.9% for a total mileage rate of 38.1767 mils.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, we have a rule.
Ms. Bagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Verkio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries, number 0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 11 is also a roll call vote, that the board of school directors approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Interbar School District and the Interbar Education Personnel Association for the time period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2023.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I would thank Mr. Harris for his work on this with, his negotiations.
It was rough. It was fun.
They, they take up a lot of time, and we come in born today, leaving our businesses to negotiate contracts, which I don't mind and I'm not complaining, but I do appreciate.
It was a little bit of a mess.
And now, hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Bagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Verkio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries, number 0. Next up, Mr. Evans.
On the Office of Personnel, motion that the following personnel action be approved, starting with 12.1, going to 12.33, on page, on page 2 to page 9.
Second. Just giving everyone time to turn through the pages.
Turn all the pages.
The motions have been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just a quick comment. Just for any of the public that is wondering if we just flipped through all those pages just for the first time. We did give it through the agenda on Monday night and had time to ask questions, so it wasn't just us flipping that and seconding that and voting on right away.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number 0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 13, Retirement. Motion would regret that the following retirements be approved. 13.1, Mr. Charles Ellis, Maintenance at the Administration Building with 42 years of service, is to be approved for retirement effective August 27, 2019.
Second.
Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Yes.
I just want to say Chuck has been a world of help to the district, been to the community for 42 years, working football games, line and field, painting buildings, driving trucks, plowing snow, you name it. He's been irreplaceable. He's been an irreplaceable asset, and I think all the different booster programs, we're certainly going to miss him because of all the, always ready to render assistance, him and the entire facility crew and maintenance crews, always ready to render assistance to the booster programs, the athletic programs, and any, anything that's going on on or about the school property. So I think we're going to miss him great. I'd like to thank him for his service.
Yes, 42 years, that's a long time. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number 0. Next up, number 14, Mr. Evans.
On the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion, motion 14.1 to 14.14, starting on page 9, ending on page 11.
Second.
The motions have been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number 0. Next up, Mr. Evans.
On the Office of Special Education and Public Services, motion that the following items be approved, starting with 15.1, going to 15.5, pages 11 to 12.
Second.
The motions have been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number 0. Next up, 16, Mr. Evans.
Yes, on the Office of Technology, motion 16.1, that the following items be approved, that the board of school directors approve the solar wind, damware, remote support, and mini remote control annual maintenance renewal. Total annual cost for the 2019-2020 school year for services is $444 to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number 0. Next, 17, Mr. Evans.
On the Office of Finance, motions, the following, the following items be approved. Motion 17.1, 17.6, starting on page 12, and on page 30.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, number zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
Motion 18, the Board of School Directors approve the publication of a notice of intent to adopt a new parking tax resolution pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act and as presented and approved by the solicitor.
Second.
Our motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Evans.
I really do appreciate everyone coming out from the various parking businesses to appeal to our sense about not raising the taxes anymore than we have to, or not raising the tax at all. But as everybody can see here, we just raised the tax to our community members by 2.9%. And we've already dropped the hammer on the school district administration to curtail spending everywhere they could without sacrificing any programs. So I really do believe we are doing our level best to control costs to the community as well as still provide quality education to our students and maintain the teachers and staff that we currently have. So we are doing everything I think we can to already contain costs, and we will continue to do that. And I think by advertising this motion or by advertising this intent, I think we're still willing to talk and work things out with everybody that we can. But as Superintendent Riley said, all of our costs go up every year. Nothing has gone down. So we really can anticipate anything going down. And as I said, our community members continue to bear that burden, and mostly silently. I mean, we could have 3,000 community members out here looking for us to control the tax increase, and they do bear that burden almost, not silently, but, you know, they know what it takes to run through.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Upstate.
Our motion carries, page zero, and one of the states. Next up, Mr. Evans.
Motion 19, Board of School Directors approve the agreement with Haplac and Maestro Health as the Flex 125 provider for Interbar School District effective July 1, 2019.
Second.
Our motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, number zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 20 is a roll call motion, that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of a history of Western society since 1300 for AP, 12E text, and Launchpad for a history of Western society since 1300 for AP from Bedford Freeman &amp; Worth at the cost of $3,820 to be paid from 2018-19 Ready-to-Learn Funds.
Second.
This is a roll call motion.
Second.
Our motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, could we roll call this, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Verkio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Our motion carries, number zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 21 is also a roll call motion, that the Board of School Directors approve the proposal from Hooten-Mifflin Parkwork Go Math Hybrid Grades 1-5 for a total amount of $43,722.87 to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Our motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, could we roll call this, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Verkio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Our motion carries, number zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 22 is a roll call motion, that the Board of School Directors approve the pre-K memorandum of understanding between the Interbar School District and the Interbar Education Association under the terms and conditions of collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Our motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Verkio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Our motion carries, number zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 23 is also a roll call motion, that the Board of School Directors approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Interbar School District and the Interbar Education Association for the time period of July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2025.
Second.
Our motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Harris, and the Interbar Education Association for putting together and working this through. This gives our district stability for many years to come, and I'm very happy that we have this on the agenda.
Thanks, Mr. Caldwell, and also, Mr. Evans.
Oh, Mr. Evans. Sorry.
But you were key in the negotiations.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I apologize.
I can't agree with you more, Mr. Evans. To be able to project our cost out will be a fudgial terror to this astronaut. It'll just be fantastic. And I can't tell you the level-headedness of this association. They didn't come here asking for the stores, they came here with a racket, you know, as well as us. So it was a no-nonsense on both sides. I want to thank them as well. Any other comments? Hearing none. Our motion is, I think I said this, our motion is being moved in seconded. Ms. Caldwell, could we roll call this?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Verkio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Our motion carries, number zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 23 is also a roll call motion, that the Board of School Directors approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Interbar School District and the Interbar Education Association for the time period of July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2025.
Second.
Our motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Harris, and the Interbar Education Association for putting together and working this through. This gives our district stability for many years to come, and I'm very happy that we have this on the agenda.
Thanks, Mr. Caldwell, and also, Mr. Evans.
Oh, Mr. Evans. Sorry.
But you were key in the negotiations.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I apologize.
I can't agree with you more, Mr. Evans. To be able to project our cost out will be a fudgial terror to this astronaut. It'll just be fantastic. And I can't tell you the level-headedness of this association. They didn't come here asking for the stores, they came here with a racket, you know, as well as us. So it was a no-nonsense on both sides. I want to thank them as well. Any other comments? Hearing none. Our motion is, I think I said this, our motion is being moved in seconded. Ms. Caldwell, could we roll call this?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Verkio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Our motion carries, number zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 20 is a roll call motion, that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of a history of Western society since 1300 for AP, 12E text, and Launchpad for a history of Western society since 1300 for AP from Bedford Freeman &amp; Worth at the cost of $3,820 to be paid from 2018-19 Ready-to-Learn Funds.
Second.
This is a roll call motion.
Second.
Our motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, could we roll call this, please? Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Verkio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Our motion carries, number zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 22 is a roll call motion, that the Board of School Directors approve the pre-K memorandum of understanding between the Interbar School District and the Interbar Education Association under the terms and conditions of collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Our motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Verkio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Our motion carries, number zero. Is it from those four?
No.
Any old business?
Yes.
Any new business? Hearing none, I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent, Ms. Riley.
I'm going to be very quick, just two brief announcements for parents. Registration is open, reregistration, residency verification. Please look at the website for further information on that. We are here all summer. It's important that if parents do have to reregister, that they are checking the website and making sure they're getting in here within a timely manner to ensure that their children start school on the first day. Also, summer work for students, summer packets will be available within, I would say, hopefully the next week for any parents that want to stop by and pick them up in the lobby of the Administration Room, Administration Building. And I would like to wish everyone a wonderful summer, and we'll see you back here in a few months. Thank you.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)